At this time, the chair will call Monica Gonzalez, Daniel Segura Kelly, and Machia Money. And I probably did not pronounce that first name correctly. If you could help the committee when you approach with the pronunciation. How do we properly pronounce your first?
Mioshia Money.
Mioshia. Beautiful name.
Thank you.
Sorry I mispronounced.
It's okay. Thank you.
We'll begin with you.
Good morning. My name is Monica Gonzalez. I am a nurse and a proud member of National Nurses Organizing Committee and National Nurses United Texas. I live in Burnett County and I currently work at Ascension Seat Medical Center in Austin. I've been there for 21 years on their neuro med search unit. I'm here today to speak out against this racially discriminatory redrawing of our congressional maps. As a nurse, we value caring, compassion, and our community. We care for anyone and everyone who walks into our hospital, no matter their political affiliation, gender, immigration status, race, or class. What we are now witnessing in our state with redistricting is a stark contrast to these values. The governor should focus this special session on issues everyday Texans are experiencing. This time could be much better spent. For example, in July, Congress passed a budget reconciliation bill that will have devastating impacts on healthcare access for millions of our patients. Many states have been scrambling to figure out what to do with the same level of federal funding for programs like Medicaid. Governor Abbott, instead of showing concern for our patients, who may soon lose their healthcare coverage, has called a special session to further Trump's agenda. I am furious at our state elected officials who are using this time to further consolidate power, instead of putting forward solutions to our impending healthcare crisis. Additionally, Texas are still wondering when the legislature will address flood relief and disaster recovery. As nurses, we see the devastating impacts natural disasters can have on individuals' health and entire communities. Texans deserve to know that they can rebuild and recover. This is about taking power away from everyday Texans and preserving power for the wealthy. This is a direct attack on democracy and the political power of working people. Nurses are sick and tired of watching elected leaders prioritize their donors and their agendas over the needs of Texans. Greg Abbott is letting Trump take over Texas with this redistricting scheme, and they're trying to suppress the votes of black and brown folks across our state to further diminish our voice and power.
Thank you for your testimony. Thank you so much. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Chloé Wilkinson. I am the Secretary of Texas Young Democrats. I'm going to repeat some points from my House Committee hearing speech, but first, let me just say to the Senate Democrats, thank you for your support. I am with House Democrats breaking quorum. We need them to know that they are supported up and down from across the state by everyone. But let me just talk about why this redistricting is especially bad for Austin. I have lived in Austin for four and a half years now, and I have seven years of campaign experience. So I do sort of know how this is going to affect us from a field and constituent service perspective. First off, there was mention that these maps are compact, but when you look at the districts that represent parts of the greater Austin area, like CD 10, CD 11, and CD 27, those are not compact districts. If you put them in a circle, they would not even constitute 25% compactness. Secondly, I really want to point out that we talk a lot about different racial groups are not monolithic. Why is it that the only congressional district that was majority white that voted Democrat is suddenly gone now? Also, CD 37, if you look at it, it is 50% Hispanic, but in reality, because West Austin is completely segregated and is rich white people with a 17% higher voter turnout rate, it is in reality a white district that looks like a Hispanic district. So I really want us to realize here that this map may have been drawn race-blind, but it is in fact going to hurt communities of color. Thank you, and I'm happy to take questions.
Appreciate your testimony.
Hi, good morning, committee. My name is Daniel Sliwoda-Kelly. I'm speaking for myself. Today, I'm conflicted because Texans experienced an enormous loss of life on July 4th due to a natural disaster that we could have been, that could have been, we could have been better prepared for. Now could be an excellent opportunity to bring Texans together and solve big problems. One of those problems is that Texans believe that the congressional maps have been designed to break communities apart, and they're not wrong to think so. This proposed congressional map violates the principle of preserving communities of interest, and it tears through the southeastern Travis County community of Dell Valley, my community. Texans don't believe that our congressional maps fairly represent our communities, and Texans Republicans, Texas Republicans are now acknowledging that there is a problem with our maps. So we agree, Texans agree, we can be using this time to pass legislation that many Texans want, legislation that would establish an independent redistricting committee. Instead, we're here fighting MAGA Republicans from establishing a one-party state. Many who have spoken have tried to appeal to the rationality of their Republican colleagues. I need to direct my words to Senate Democrats. My uncle was the general superintendent of the Church of Nazarene. In the Church of Nazarene, the general superintendent is essentially one of the six popes. Another uncle was president of the Nazarene Bible College. I share this to establish my credibility as a former Christian nationalist. I've been in the room with leaders in the Christian nationalist movement. Democrats, please look at your Republican colleagues. The eyes that are either looking back at you or avoiding your contact see you as soulless enemies. These are people capable of looking you in the eyes and telling you they love you, and in the same breath, will sentence you to hell. Get out. You must get out. You are not working with people who are here in good faith. I need you to know that these are people who have a depraved indifference to democracy. They intend to annihilate democracy and establish a theocracy. You are attempting to work with people who are fundamentally different from us.
Thank you.
When you and I watch the handmaids tell and recoil at the scenes, they salivate.
Stick with your timeframe.
This is the world they want to.
Sir, we have to stick with our allocated timeframe, or it's disrespectful to the other witnesses. Thank you. Yes, please, go ahead. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Mioshia Money. I'm a deputized voter register, community advocate, and proud public servant for the people in Houston, Houston, Texas, Harris County, especially in Congressional District 9 and 18. I stand for the people, the real ones. We want maps. We want real maps. We want access to the ballots. We want leadership, and we want to fight for what's righteous and not for against us, nothing for against us. HB4 has another, is just another chapter in the same tired playbook. We saw this similar back in 2021, where they rolled out the Senate Bill 1, SB 1, that made it harder for the people to vote, especially the seniors with disabilities, the folks with language barriers, the black and brown communities, and the ones just trying to survive. As I spend so much time educating and informing individuals about the questioning, I see the concerns in their voices and their faces and their voices, and somehow, they have some sort of confusion and intimidation regards to this bill. But you guys want our, you guys want our votes all the time. Y'all are steady asking for our votes. We're tired of knocking and asking to be let in. We're tired of begging. We're tired of this. Now, at this time, we're not asking, we're just going to go ahead and go ahead and kick it down. Our neighborhoods, our kids, and everything is being affected. So let me make this clear, and let me make this loud. I stand against HB4. I stand against gerrymandering, and I stand against voter suppression and intimidation. And let's make this clear, we're not backing down, and we're just getting started. Thank you.
Appreciate your testimony, each of you members. Any questions? Chair will now call Nicholas Little, Veronica Worms, Emily French,
Anthony's on his way in.
We'll give Mr. Gutierrez time, and we'll begin with you. Go ahead.
My name is Veronica Worms, and I am a policy attorney representing the Texas Civil Rights Project against SB4. This map is a blatant attempt to rob Texans of color of their political power. Despite the fact that 95% of Texas's population growth was in communities of color, the 2021 maps did not produce additional opportunity districts for Texans of color. This proposal makes an already discriminatory map that is still being litigated even worse. If it were implemented, white Texans who comprise only 40% of the population would control 79% of the congressional delegation. Texans know an unfair system when they see one. The district lines here cannot be explained away on partisanship. As the Supreme Court noted in Bartlet v. Strickland, "A state intentionally destroying effective crossover districts raises serious constitutional concerns." The DOJ's letter, while completely misstating the law, cited impermissible racial considerations in four majority-minority districts, not a quest for partisan advantage. What the legislature delivered with SB4 is a map that brazenly and intentionally cracks historic majority-minority districts, including court-ordered VRA districts, and then packs other minority groups into type-ertman areas to dilute their political power. That is targeted racial discrimination, plain and simple. The lengths the state has gone to deny Texans fair representation in this redistricting farce are staggering. The Supreme Court has said that redistricting mid-decade to replace a court-ordered map is allowed, but that's not what's happening here. The House had only three regional hearings to encompass the 30-plus million Texans spread over more than 268,000 square miles. Only five hours of public testimony were allowed per hearing, so only a max of 150 Texans could speak. Less than 48 hours after the last regional hearing, this map appeared. The Senate had four virtual hearings, where again, the vast majority of witnesses opposed this out-of-order redistricting, and the exact same map was filed. Its drafters clearly disregarded the public's testimony on the impact of redistricting on their communities and their overwhelming opposition to this rushed redraw. We urge the committee to focus on disaster relief rather than creating a new disaster in this destructive and discriminatory map.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Very much. You may begin.
Hi, I'm Emily E. B. French. I represent Common Cause Texas. I'm far from the first to share my disappointment that this legislature is putting gerrymandering over disaster relief, but I also believe this legislature is making future disaster relief harder with gerrymandering. Right now, we're sitting in CD 37. Under a new map, we'd be sitting in CD 10. This Capitol complex would share a U.S. House rep with students at Texas A&amp;M, 87 miles away, the people of Centerville, 124 miles away, and the people of Segno, 183 miles away. But under this proposed map, if I walked 1,000 feet to Texas Chili Parlor, I would be in CD 37 again. Imagine that you live at the Capitol, which I'm sure is not hard for many members of this committee, and a natural disaster strikes. Let's say that the power goes out, my phone has like 15%, I only have enough juice to call my congressional rep. I want to use this constituent services to find resources, locate warming or cooling centers, and connect with other folks who are helping out near me. If my friends at Texas Chili Parlor have to walk over, these maps would force them to get help from a different representative. By drawing our communities apart, you're making it harder for neighbors to help each other. If my cousins in Flugerville need help, these maps would force them to call a different third representative in CD 11, who would also represent our uncle 65 miles away in Lano, the people of San Angelo, 180 miles away, and Midland, 283 miles away. Flugerville is 14 miles away from the Capitol. This map has Flugerville in with Midland, and the Capitol in with Segno, and Midland is 430 miles away from Segno. That is 11 and 1/2 Rhode Islands laid in to end. I believe the chair and I have different definitions of the word compact. I'm a lifelong Texan. I was born in Houston, where hurricanes constantly happen. I was raised in Tornado Alley. I now live amongst freezes and floods in central Texas. When natural disaster strikes, I lean on my neighbors and they lean on me. This map makes it harder for Texans to help each other. Please do not pass it. Thank you.
Mr. Little.
Good morning. First giving my regards to the chair, vice chair, my state senator, Senator Boris Miles over here. It's a privilege and a pleasure to be here. I'm here, I represent the Houston branch NWA CP. I am also a Navy combat veteran, graduate of the United States Naval Academy, Class of 2008, and I'm a Texan. And I'm here because I'm here advocating and speaking on behalf for the constituents and the people of Houston who feel like they are voiceless, or feel as if, you know, if they're not at their table, that they're on the menu. And I think it's imperative that we take notice to realize that the constituents, the people, are the people that we're supposed to be listening to, not the federal government. Otherwise, we have no state sovereignty. And it concerns me, and it concerns many of our constituents in any room, that we are currently at a point right now where we are willing to listen to what's going on from somewhere else versus doing what's good for Texas, as stated by members of the committee. So I'm just hoping that today, and going forward, that everyone here, and everyone that's not in the chamber, that are able to vote on this, will make the right decision and do it based on the conscience of Texas, and not on the conscience of anyone that considers themselves practically a king, or anyone who is seemingly undermining our democracy. That is not why I served my country for 10 years. That's not why many people in our community fight to be elected to office, to just bow down to any type of tyrannical force at any person's will. We are here all as Texans, but more importantly, we are Americans. And that's what makes our country great, that's what makes our state great, is being able to realize and understand that this is who we are. So I just want to ask that everyone here just really take in consideration all the testimonies being given, all the testimony will be given, and just please keep in mind that as Texas, we've always stood strong, and it is imperative that we maintain that stability, and we maintain that to represent that across the country as well. Thank you.
We appreciate each of you and your testimony. Thank you for your service to our nation, Mr. Little. Senator West, we welcome you to the committee today, and appreciate you joining us, and you're recognized if you have a question for Mr. Little.
I don't know that it's for Mr. Little, it may very well be for the author of the bill, based on the testimony of this panel. In terms of deliberating on exactly what's taken into consideration in recommending this bill or amendments thereto, how will the testimony received by the committee, by people that have taken their time out to express their opinion on the bill, be utilized?
Is that a question for me?
Are you, is that directed at me?
No, no. Author of the bill, Senator King.
Senator King.
Did you understand the question?
I think so.
Let me make sure you understand it.
Okay, please.
We've had, and I've been listening to the testimony, and we've had hundreds of people testifying on this particular bill, 10, 205. And it would seem, based on what I've gleaned, most of them have testified against this process, and now also on this particular bill. And my question is, in terms of what your recommendation is going to be on this particular bill or amendments requested, how will the testimony of citizens that have taken their time to testify be taken into consideration?
Certainly. Senator King, thank you. And as to amendments, we'll just look at each amendment independently, and those decisions will ultimately be made by the, I guess it would be floor amendments, and they'll be made by the 31, or 30 now, senators on the floor. They'll make that decision in a vote on each amendment. I would say as to how is testimony taken into account, I think each senator represents their roughly million people in their district, but they also represent the state as a whole, and I think each senator will.
With all due respect, that's not the question I asked about the other senators.
Senator West, let him complete his thought, because he may end up at that destination.
He may end up, okay, all right.
I think I'm getting there. But I was just going to say, each of us will take into account all the information put before us, our personal analysis of the bill, what we believe that our district wants, I think, and the testimony that was provided, both in the Senate and probably in the House too, I watched some of the House hearings, and contacts that we're getting from constituent calls and emails and letters, and I think we'll all take, I would expect we would all take all of that into account in making our decision on how to vote on any amendment or on the bill itself.
Okay. Senator West.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I was referring to you, not everybody else. I mean, as the author of the bill, you are going to have to make a determination as to what bill actually comes to the floor for consideration. And normally, what we do in this process, and I've been involved in it for a long time now, is that we listen to the testimony, and based on the testimony, we take the bill, end up having a substitute and things of that nature, based on the testimony that we hear. And so I guess the question I'm asking is not as relates to other senators, but more specifically as to you, as the author of the bill, are you going to take into consideration that hundreds of people that have testified showed up at these particular hearings in deciding what bill and/or substitute that you will bring to the floor? And if so, how will you do that?
Senator King. Well, my intent is, as chair, to bring the bill up at the conclusion of testimony today for a vote before the committee, and to recommend that the committee favorably report the bill to the Senate. And then I, if it passes out of the committee, then, and if it's brought to the floor, then it would be my intent to recommend to the floor that we support the bill.
Okay, so the testimony that you've heard over these few weeks has been loud and clear that this process is not favored by Texans, correct? And the testimony that I've heard so far today is that this map is not favored by Texans. You will not take that into consideration in terms of making a recommendation to the committee and/or to the Senate, is that correct?
Senator King. So much of the testimony that I've heard, and I've taken it all into consideration, one of the things that pushed me toward this particular map, a great deal of the testimony has been that the existing map is not as compact as it could be, and I believe this map takes strong steps in that direction. We discussed earlier before you got here specifically with regard to districts 32 and 35 are very good examples of that. So I believe it reflects the testimony that we've seen in that regard. I also believe that most of the testimony that I've heard has been with regard to racial considerations, and I think it's totally inappropriate to take racial considerations into account when drawing a map. I think that that's not preferred by the law, to say the least, and I think it would be inappropriate. So I think much of it, all the testimony that's been accusing, suggesting that this map was drawn on a racial basis is inaccurate and incorrect, and so I'm disregarding that part of the testimony, because I didn't take race into account, and I don't see race in this map.
Okay, and I understand that.
Senator West.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. With all due respect, when you begin to look at the map itself and taking into consideration not just the map, but the whole process, 2021, we had a map that the Attorney General and State of Texas is defending in federal court right now. And then we get a letter, Trump says that he needs five seats from Texas, and then we get a letter from the Department of Justice. I think that's chronological order. Then all of a sudden, there's no map, because I've asked you about maps, and then a map shows up in the House. Then we have the quorum, parliamentary use of quorum breaks in order to stymie the efforts, and then another map is filed over here. I think that's the order of events. People have testified against these maps, against the maps and the entire process, and the only districts that end up frankly, for the most part, being cracked and packed are minority districts. More specifically, I'll give you an example, the district in Dallas, and I hadn't looked at, hadn't looked at the maps and, wow, all the economic engines are being taken out of the district in Dallas for some strange reason. Can you help me understand that?
I have to ask you, I'm sorry, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I have to ask you to be more specific.
As it relates to what district or what?
Well, what economic engines, what district, what congressional member?
Sure, Jasmine Crockett, her district. As I understand it, and I stand to be corrected if necessary, the airport downtown area, the medical center, law schools, and all that are taken out for some reason. And if race is not a consideration, why would that happen?
Well, I know I represent Tarrant County, and even though Lockheed is across the street from my district, I still aggressively represent Lockheed. And I don't think, because you've moved a hospital district, or you've moved a district outside a hospital district, if it's still in her primary county, I assume she's going to continue to represent that as aggressively as she would otherwise. Downtown Fort Worth is not in my district, but I'm actively involved in representing and being supported by businesses and folks in the downtown area. So I don't think you can draw a line like that and say, because the hospital district's no longer in her district, that she's not going to be working for and representing that hospital district.
So you agree with me that that should not be a partisan consideration, right? In terms of whether or not you move or don't move a hospital district or downtown area? And so in drawing maps, you shouldn't take into consideration moving economic engines of a particular district to accomplish a partisan result? You would agree with that, based on what you just said?
I don't. Senator King. I don't think that's what I just said. I think what I said, you asked me specifically about her district. I think, I think that, as I said earlier, that you should not take, that I did not take racial factors into consideration. I think that the map is more compact than the existing map. I think it, that it achieves the objective that at least I had of performing better from a partisan perspective for Republicans. And I think that, that it is drawn in a manner that's going to continue to allow members of Congress to represent their districts and the areas surrounding their district, like we all do. As I said, I'm Tarrant County, and I try to, I only have about a third of Tarrant County, but I try to represent all of Tarrant County and help, and the other senators in Tarrant County do the same thing. And I believe this map takes into consideration what is traditional redistricting criteria, and I think it's a very supportable map.
Senator West.
Mr. Chairman, and I know this committee is laboring, because I've been on this committee several times before myself, and I'll have extensive questions for you on the floor, because you weren't really responsive to the question that I asked, to be honest with you. But, because again, I asked about the partisan piece in terms of taking the economic engines out, and if it's not a partisan issue, then why were they taken out? Okay? I mean, just because you have economic engines like downtown Dallas, the medical district, law schools, and things like that, you don't need to take those out of a minority district in order to establish, to accomplish your goal of increasing partisanship in the state of Texas. But yet, still, that's what was done by the map jurors. Speaking of the map jurors, did you draw this map? Who drew the map?
Senator King. Okay, I've adopted HB4. My understanding was it was driven, it was traditionally the way it's worked, is the congressional delegation usually has someone draw a map. I believe, I think I'm correct in saying in 2021, the Redistricting Trust, which is an organization that's involved in redistricting across the country, they helped draw the map for the congressional, Republican congressional delegation in 2021. My understanding is that the Redistricting Trust drew this map as well as others, and this was the map that was adopted by the House.
Okay, so the Redistricting Trust drew this map.
I think they participated in drawing the map, is my understanding.
Did you have any input in drawing the map?
None at all.
Yes, it was given to you?
No.
Well, let me finish. It was given to you, and you were asked to carry this particular map without you having any input into what the impact of this map was?
Senator King. No, not at all. As I've said repeatedly in the hearings and caucus, that I considered drawing a map. I had been considering waiting for the House map to come over. No one ever handed me a map. I was not given directions on whether or not, on any map to take. But as I watched the House hearings, and I stated this earlier before you got here today, as I watched the House hearings, and as I looked at this map, and I thought it was more compact than the existing map, I asked our legal counsel to review it, to see if they came to the same conclusion that the House counsel had, that the map was legal in all, under all applicable law. They reported back to me that it was, and then I filed They reported back to me that it was, and then I filed the bill on Monday. I, rather than wait for the House bill to come over, because things were stalling in the House, which is a procedural and ma, way of pursuing passing legislation, the same way you've done it a thousand times over your decades in the House and the Senate.
Decades, decades.
Decades.
Okay.
If you're, if you're working on a, a companion bill and the bill on the other side of the body begins to stall, then you, you will file it over here and try to get it moving as a companion. And that's exactly what I did. I decided I, that the House bill was a very good bill, that it accomplished the purposes that I had in, in, in looking for a bill, looking for a map. And I went ahead and decided, decided to file it when it stalled in the House because the Democrats left the state. And, you know, my opinion is when, when, when things stall, then you try to find a way to move forward, and that's what I did and why I filed this map.
Senator West.
And, and in closing, all due respect, I think that listening to public testimony here, it's just checking the box, that's all it has. The reality is, is that this testimony that is being given by citizens of the state of Texas is not really going to be taken into consideration, given the fact that you've already said that whatever happens in terms of testimony of citizens, you're going to make a motion today to approve this particular map and send it to the floor. That's what I heard you say, is that correct?
Senator King.
Well, I, I would take the testimony of one person who's on this panel before us. The way I understood her testimony was that a map should be drawn from a percentage basis that directly reflects the racial makeup of Texas. And I do not agree with drawing a map on that basis. So in that regard, that particular testimony, I would disregard because I think that's the wrong way to draw a map.
What about, Mr. Chairman?
Senator West.
What about communities of interest?
Senator King.
I believe this map being more compact than the existing map improves communities of interest.
How so?
Well, I'll use District thirty-two and District thirty-five as examples. And, and- District thirty-five, for example, now begins way south in Bear County, takes extremely difficult jigs and jags as it progresses all the way up into northern Travis. District thirty-five under this map becomes very well-aligned communities of interest in the counties of Guadalupe, Wilson, Carons, and what's a more rural area of Bear. And, and this is a much more compact district than the existing thirty-five, and there's other examples throughout the map.
Mr. Chairman. Senator West.
And so, let's, let's stay with Bear, because I, I don't know that much about that particular area other than, I know San Antonio was there. And so you've taken urban communities, the urban communities of Bear County and aligned them with rural communities in Wilson and also Carons County, is that correct?
Well, it's much like my Senate district that takes parts of Fort Worth and then aligns it with the suburban areas of Parker County, which would be that area of Bear County, I guess would be more of a suburban area, and then connects it with, and in my area, connects it with the rural counties of, of, that are to the west and south of that. And so that's just what you have to do in Texas because of the, the difference in population in our urban and rural counties. So you're always having to reach in and pick up some population. But I, what I'll tell you is just, just looking at the map, common sense tells you that a map that is compact, a, a district that is compact as opposed to one that is long and thin and jiggled and jagged, it, that that compact one is, is more compact. I don't know how to put that.
Again, I'm talking about communities of interest. So when you did your analysis for that particular area to make a determination as to whether those were communities of interest, what did you take into consideration? If anything?
Well, I mean, generally speaking, an inner-city area is going to have a little bit different primary issues before than a suburban issue, than a suburban district might have, which will have a little bit different ones than what a rural area might have, although they all have overlapping issues. And so I think when you're trying to draw a map and you're trying to get seven hundred and sixty-six thousand people into, into thirty-eight districts, you obviously have to, you're going to have to draw districts that, that are outside, that are, that reach into urban areas, but also extend into rural areas. And I think when you compare, in this case, District thirty-five as example, the existing thirty-five to the proposed thirty-five, the proposed thirty-five in any common sense is more compact.
Is that-
Senator West.
Oh, okay, and, and, and members, I apologize. I'll, I'll save a lot of these questions for the floor. But again, with all due respect, I asked about communities of interest, you talked about compactness. I understand what you're talking about with compactness, but the question is what factors did you take into consideration to make a determination as to whether or not they were communities of interest?
Communities of interest.
Let me have finished, sir. Thank you.
Sorry.
And so the question is, is that communities of interest, I mean, do people have the same types of, I guess you could say they go to the same churches? Are they, what, what, what elements of communities of interest that's been recognized by law did you take into consideration?
Well, it can be a lot of things. As you said, it can be the, the fact that this is, that there's a River Oaks neighborhood.
In the thirty-five?
I'm, I'm just throwing out a name of a neighborhood.
Well, I was talking about thirty-five.
We'll call it Meadowbrook.
I'm talking about thirty-five.
Okay, I, I-
I, I, I'll do respect.
Senator West. No, you're not, no, it's not being with due respect.
Senator King.
I'm trying to answer the question. I'm trying to, I'm trying to answer what I, what you ask, what I mean by what I take into consideration in a community of interest, which is one of the traditional redistricting criteria.
Exactly.
All right? It can be many things. It can be a historic neighborhood, okay? Or it can be the regional water areas. It can be the regional transportation areas, the text dot zones. It can be the economic development areas. And I'll use as another example, my home county of Parker, a large percentage of the folks in Parker County drive to Tarrant County for work. So they have, so in that regard, there's a community of interest in the commuting, in the jobs that are provided in Tarrant County, and the families that live in Parker. Now, as Tarrant moves into Parker and more of that business moves into Parker, we share that economic base. So communities of interest can be anything, and particularly in a county the size of Tarrant. Now, when you look at thirty-five, you see those, those large rural counties, and you also see a larger population base in the, in the, in the more suburban area of, and less developed areas of Bear County. And they're going to be more aligned from a community of interest standpoint than they would if you had picked inner-city San Antonio. And I think it's a very good district.
Okay.
And, and I'll also suggest that no one on this committee has offered amendments to change that district, and anybody is certainly available to, or has the option of offering amendment to change that district on the floor. But my point is, when I look at it, it is a much more compact district, and compactness takes into account geography and all the traditional redistricting criteria. And any common sense look at, look at it says it's a more compact, better designed, easier to represent from a driving distance for the, for the, for this congressional member. And it's just a better district all around in its geography.
Okay, it sounds like you've used the word compactness about ten times, so it seems-
Senator West.
Mr. Chairman, it sounded like you used the word compactness several times in your response. I appreciate your response, but it seems like compactness was the number one element that you took into consideration in drafting or presenting this particular map. Thank you, sir.
Members, any questions for this panel? If not, thank you each for your testimony. Senator Miles, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Senator West, let me just answer your questions that you were trying to get answered as you exited. The gentleman's name is Adam Kincaid, who's out of Virginia, who wrote this map. And it's just coincidental that he runs the National Republican Redistricting Committee. Oh, yeah, yeah. He's done so for a while now, and he lives out of Virginia. That's who actually drew this map. And for the numbers, Senator, we had two hundred and five today, as of today, and I'd be generous in saying that five of those were for the map and the two hundred were against. Now, today, we've got a hundred and seventeen signed up against the map and three for the map. So now, what the chairman's going to do with those numbers, that's up to him. You asked him that question, he's going to have to give you that answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Miles. We'll proceed with our public testimony. The next panel, we will call, the chair will call again Anthony Gutierrez, Andre Wagner, Nicolette Arriente, Dylan Flaherty. You may begin, sir.
Thank you, Chair, members of the committee. I appreciate your time and allowing us to be here. My name is Dylan Flaherty. I'm here to represent myself. I'm also a candidate for Congress in Texas's thirty-seventh district here in Austin. I find myself incredibly frustrated with the purpose of this. There are far more pressing needs in Texas. Flood relief, public school funding, making lives for Texans better. And yet, we're bickering over partisan politics coming from the president. It's incredibly frustrating. I also want to find, I also want to call out something that I find incredibly disingenuous. The chair mentions that these maps are more compact and he cites District thirty-five continuously. Yet District eleven in the new map spans from Flugerville to west of Midland. As I'm sure that Senator Sparks would understand, the needs of Midland and the needs of Flugerville are far different. And so saying that they're more compact, allowing for easier drivability is a joke because it's a six-hour drive from Flugerville to Midland. Again, this is all coming from the President of the United States. And I don't understand as Texans why we're all of a sudden bending the knee to the federal government. As a Texan, I believe that we're Texans, that we stand above that. And as we sit here right now, the FBI has accepted to hunt down House members of, of our, of, of Texas. And no one seems to be crying a foul to that. Now, if the roles were reversed, if this was the Biden administration or the Obama administration, I know all of you would be screaming from their rooftops. So I look at all of you today and I ask you to reject this measure. To imagine if the roles were reversed, what would you say? Because this isn't democracy. You're not allowing us to choose our, our representatives, you're choosing your voters.
Hello?
Go ahead. Yes, you may begin.
Thank you, Chair and committee members. Good morning, my name is Nicolette Arriente. I am here representing myself and the State Democratic Executive Committee of Congressional District Twenty-three. I'm on the outskirts of San Antonio that goes all the way to El Paso right now. And like many of y'all, I do also have constituents that I report to, that come to me regularly and ask me about, like, hey, what are the issues that are happening not only with the Democratic Party, or how can I get in contact with my representative? Their issues, again, from San, San Antonio to El Paso range so differently, from Del Rio to Maverick County Eagle Pass to Crystal City Zavala, like, these are all rural towns. And I've heard so many folks on this, on this dais talk about CD thirty-five in Bear County. Respectfully, you do not live in Bear County. You don't know the issues that impact us in Bear County, yet you want to refuse to hear the public testimony of Texans who, like working-class Texans, wish they could be here in front of y'all to talk about why redistricting, redistricting is so impactful to them. But they're not given that opportunity. They have to work, they have to make sure their kids are getting ready for school next week. But y'all are not giving every single Texan that opportunity. And a, as the gentleman mentioned, being frustrated is almost like, that's almost like, we, we carry with a pride as Texas now because we don't have the representation that we truly deserve. Again, from, from San Antonio to Del Rio to Eagle Pass, all over southwest Texas, we have, I have constituents who are constantly asking for help. If you want, you could, you could split up Congressional District Twenty-three, but nobody wants to talk about that because that's a solidly Republican district. I really want to see leadership that shows up for Texas, and I do commend all of the Texas Democrats that have fled the House, fled the Senate to do so. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you. You may begin.
Thank you. My name is Andre Wagner. I'm also representing the Houston Black American Democrats. I come here as a resident of Congressional District Eighteen. I have lived in Congressional District Eighteen for over twenty years. My mother lives in Congressional District Eighteen. My sister lives in Congressional District Eighteen. Please do not split up our district. Do not pack and crack us like we did in Beaumont. Beaumont, for over thirty years, was a solid Democratic seat that was represented by a wonderful member, built on communities of interest of Latinos and African-Americans who voted together. But now Beaumont is split in half. But in Houston, there's too many of African-Americans there, so instead you pack us in one district. Now, have you, the only real thing I would ask is instead of voting on making new lines, perhaps put a pla, a law in place requiring our governor to call an election after our congressional representative has died? I currently reside in Congressional District Eighteen, and I have no congressional representative, and I have had not, I have not had so for over five months. In Oklahoma, Arkansas, Louisiana, and Mississippi, all Republican states require their governor to have and hold a special election within either sixty or a hundred days of a vacancy. All of the Republican states. Please, if you want to do something about elections, how about requiring our governor, like four other Republican states do, to have a special election when there's a vacancy that occurs? I am now without representation. You all are talking about effective representation, and my community does not have so because the governor has chosen not to call an election until November. That makes no sense to me. And so please, while we are talking about having effective representation, I think right now, my family, my community is dis-served by what's going on in Texas, by what's going on in Congressional District Eighteen. So please implore for my family and yours for better representation. Thank you.
Appreciate your testimony. Members, any questions? Senator Miles?
Thank you. Andre, let me say thank you for being here today and thank you for the support your family's always given our community, not just me, but our community. And I think your math's a little wrong, because Brother Turner has passed for five months, but we've actually gone without representation in eighteen almost, almost a year now. Okay, it's been almost a year that we've gone without proper representation consistently in the eighteenth Congressional District. You should also know that based on this map that is being presented to us today, we are overpacked. They have taken Senate District Nine, Congressional District Nine, which was an African-American district belonging to Congressman Al Green, put seventy percent of his district into the eighteenth Congressional District, which is already an African-American district, which now makes Senate District Thirteen the largest African-American, the only African-American and the largest African-American senatorial district in the country, damn near. Y'all understand that? So that's packing. That's heavy packing, but they've taken away one of our voices. We had, where we had two, we now only have one. That's some serious packing. Thank you for your testimony today. And to the gentleman who first spoke, it's absolutely correct. They're not allowing constituents to choose their electeds. This is allowing electeds to choose their constituents. Okay? And that's where we're wrong. And as far as our, my colleagues in the House, who are being chased like runaway slaves and the only pursuit they're trying to do is protect democracy, we have to stand with them because that's all they're doing is trying to protect democracy. we have to stand with them because that's all they're doing is trying to protect democracy. And they're being chased away, and they're being trapped like runaway slaves. Thank you.
Senator King?
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Mr., is it Flaherty?
Flaherty, yes.
Flaherty, thank you. I just wanted to respond to what you said about District 11 and going from west Texas from Midland. It actually goes from Hector County, which is one county to the west, into Travis County. In the current map, it goes from Hector County into Bell County. And so, it's, it's almost really the same footprint. It just, instead of picking up some additional population in Bell, it dips in and picks some out of Travis. So, so the distance from east to west in the current map is really the same as the distance from east to west in the proposed map. And I just wanted to make, point that out.
Do I have a chance to respond?
Certainly.
I just find it hypocritical that-
At Chair's discretion, but I'm sure-
So, you talk about this thin line that goes down I-35. But in District 11, that thin line follows along the Williamson County and Travis County border. So it's the same thing, and then it balloons out into west Texas. It's a five-and-a-half, six-hour drive. And by saying that it already exists to some extent, doesn't make it any better. Especially when you're claiming that, that the 35th District-
But you understand in west Texas, for you to be able to get 766,000 people together, you've got- So, these numbers will be a little bit off, but I think they're still pretty close. So if you look at the I-35 corridor, even though you've got large cities like Amarillo, Lubbock, Wichita Falls, Midland, Odessa, San Antonio, west of I-35, even though, Abilene, even though you've got all those cities, still only about 14.5% of Texans live west of the I-35 corridor. And if you look at the east Texas, the I-45 corridor, only about 8.5% of Texans live east of that. Most of the population is in the triangle. So if to comport with one person, one vote, which is very important, because if you live in a district that's got 100,000 people, and I live in one that's got 50,000 people, my vote's worth twice as much as yours. And that's why the most fundamental thing in redistricting in congressional districts is equal population. So if you're going to put together a district into west Texas that's got 766,000 people in it, you've got to come east. And you're going to have to pick up population out of Williamson or Bell or wherever it is. And so, my, my only point was that you had, had said it was wrong to come all the way from Hector County to, to Travis County in a new map. And I was just simply saying that the footprint really hasn't changed. It's just going from Hector County into Bell County, which is just one, one county north of, or two counties north of Travis County. So it's still that same spread, but you just don't have any other way to draw those west Texas districts and comply with the most fundamental purpose of, of redistricting.
That is so intellectually lazy. Like, honestly, that is the most intellectually lazy argument I've heard thus far.
Sir, we're not, we're not here to debate. We certainly had Senator King, as the author, choose to make some comments based on testimony and offered you the opportunity to respond. But we have to continue along, or we're going to lose witnesses that are on timeframes to have to get back home.
Thank you.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Chairman, thank you for your testimony as well. Very much appreciated. We're all listening very closely. Thank you both as well. We'll call the next panel. Dr. Craig Nazor, Robert Norris, Susan McNeil, Emily Amps. Please come forward, and we'll begin with Dr. Nazor.
Hello. My name is Dr. Nazor. I'm the Conservation's Chair of the State Chapter of the Sierra Club. Cyrus Reed, our Conservation Director, has submitted some really good points here about how this redistricting negatively affects people's power to control the kind of environmental issues we have. One point I'd like to say is about this compactness. District 10 has not been compacted since it was first drawn. It looks like a python that swallowed an elephant, and it continues to look that way. It's highly unrepresentative. Another district that I'd like to talk about, it's, it's in the valley, actually. It's a couple of them. It's about Corpus Christi. Corpus Christi Harbor is facing huge challenges with pollution. And desalination plants and LNG plants, and there's an ethane cracker plant there now. And what's happened, even though some of the districts may look more compact, they, they divide Corpus Christi up now into three different areas. And one, 27, it reaches around like a little snake to bite off a little Republican area, a really Democrat area right there. And what happens in Texas is, for instance, the TCEQ is not allowed to, is to control accumulative impacts of pollution, just individual places. So when they built that ethane cracker plant, the TCEQ told Exxon that, no, you, that's too much air pollution. Build two plants right next to each other and okay them each for half that amount, and we can do it. That was just dumb. And everybody saw through it. But now their impact with all this pollution and their, their communities of color, of minorities, when you, and then you split them off into pieces, they can't even go to the EPA through their representative. This is wrong. This is wrong.
Thank you for your testimony. Thanks for being here. Senator Anjos, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And while the comments I made initially when we started this hearing, that I was very concerned about Noesis County, their ways being split, I think in three ways. And quite frankly, that's not being compact. And Noesis County, as you well know, besides, we have the port, refineries, new interests coming in. We, we have a diesel plant being constructed that will be used as a template for the rest of the Gulf Coast. So all, all of that is suddenly completely changed around, which I don't think is very good for the communities in Corpus Christi and in the coastal area when you have that type of division within the county itself and the neighborhoods. But thank you for your testimony.
And Sierra Club agrees with you there.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Welcome. Pull that microphone close, introduce yourself, and give us your testimony.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, my name is Emily Amps, and I'm the Director of Politics and Policy, excuse me, the Texas AFL-CIO, the state's labor federation with over 250,000 affiliated members across the state, including in your districts. And I'm here to testify on their behalf and for myself. When this weekend, there will have been four legislative hearings to discuss disaster response and how we can prevent more innocent lives from being swept away in the floods. And when this weekend, there will have been 13 legislative hearings to discuss congressional redistricting, something no Texan asked for and will further divide already fragile communities. That's time that should have been spent addressing what Texans do need. Protection for damaging storms, wages that are enough to put food on tables and roofs over heads, access to health care and health insurance so our neighbors don't have to choose between their well-being and bankruptcy. Shielding workers from wage theft and writing laws that protect workers from heat death. But instead, we're here because state leaders would rather bow to the pressure of a president that cares more about his political future than the future of our state. Pressures that will result in silencing even more Texans, including many workers, adding to the many voices already muted by the current district lines. Communities that have already been severed and neighborhoods already divided by this current map, which could be used already as a study in gerrymandering. This map, though, SB4, this bill, doubles down on gerrymandering and says, hold my beer. For example, fast-growing suburban communities like mine in Buta, Texas, just south of Austin, currently in Congressional District 21, already sliced and diced and put into district with rural communities that we have little in common with. I thought it couldn't get worse. I was proven wrong. If this passes and is signed into law, my house will now be on the edge of Congressional District 27, a district that will go from Hayes and Travis Counties to the Gulf of Mexico and Mata Gorda County. On a good day with no traffic, and those of us in Austin know there is no good days with no traffic, that's about a three-hour and 10-minute drive. Doesn't sound very compact to me. And please, someone explain to me why a fast-growing suburb of the 11th-largest city in the United States has in common with Palacios, Texas? And of course, it's a rhetorical question because we all know the answer is very little. So I urge you, as you move forward, please remember that your actions during this special section, session will have a real impact on real people. And there are real issues that need to be addressed. And also remember that you do not have to pass a map. Please don't forget that.
And thanks for your testimony. Ms. McNeil, welcome. Get close to that microphone and introduce yourself and go ahead.
Okay. My name is Susan McNeil, and I live in Flugerville, District 17. I'm here representing myself. And you all have heard about the racial disparities and the legalities of this map. So I'm going to focus on what is actually transpiring with this map. It is an authoritarian attack on our democracy. Our democracy is already fractured with Congress shirking their responsibilities and not representing the American people and ceding their power to the Oval Office. If you approve this map, it will be one more nail in the coffin of democracy. The felon in the White House states that he deserves five more seats because he won Texas, the largest majority percentage ever in the history of the United States. That is a lie. So he does not deserve the five seats. I, for one, will never, ever bow to tyranny. Like the old adage says, "Give me liberty or give me death." And you all can take that to the bank. I implore you, do not destroy our freedoms and democracy. And if you're fair, if you're scared of the felon, quit, leave, famoose. We do not want or need scared politicians. And lastly, do not force the American people into an armed revolution because I fear if you continue on the same path, this is where we are headed.
Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Mr. Norris, welcome. Pull that microphone close. Mr. Norris, introduce yourself and go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Robert Norris, representing myself and opposed to Senate Bill 4. I want my grandkids and all others to benefit from a responsive government that promotes the best interests of our citizens. I want them to benefit from public schools that help develop intelligent and kind students. President Trump wants this legislature to adopt a new congressional map that will allow him to continue favoring wealthy and powerful Republicans. These are the same people who want to privatize and undermine our public schools. My grandkids, like me, have lived most of their lives in Travis County. The map you're considering will redraw our local districts with the result that our excellent congressmen Lloyd Doggett and Greg Cassar are less likely to be elected in the future. These congressmen are working to promote democracy and fairness and oppose cuts to our legacy safety net programs like Medicaid and food stamps. Also, communities of color in other parts of Texas will lose vital representation if this map is adopted. As you've heard, Texas has a shameful history of disenfranchising blacks and Hispanics, which Senate Bill 4 will continue. The map before you will have an adverse impact on many of the state's grandkids and everyday citizens, so I definitely oppose it. And I applaud the House Democrats who are doing the heavy lifting to thwart the Trump and Abbott power grab by going to other states. I'm finished.
And thanks for your testimony. Senators, any questions for any of our witnesses on this panel? Well, thank you, your excuse. Thanks for your testimony. Call Anthony Gutierrez, Dr. Susana Caranza, David Wheeler, Nick Mulberg. Looking for Anthony Gutierrez. Here's Dr. Susana Caranza, David Wheeler, Nick Mulberg. We call Carrie King. Is Carrie here, wishing to testify? Carrie King? Just give me- Francesca Fragalehi. Is Francesca here, wishing to testify? Wow, come on down. Welcome. Welcome to each of you. When you get situated, we'll start over here. Francesca, pull the microphone close, introduce yourself, and give us your testimony. Welcome.
Good morning, Chairman King and Vice Chair Creighton and committee members. My name is Francesca Fragalehi, and I'm representing myself in opposition to SB4. Alongside the vast majority of Texans whom y'all have heard from and from those whom you have not, I'm vehemently opposed to SB4 because the proposed map and this process are wrong from a moral, logical, and a Texan perspective. I'm proud to be here today as a lifelong Texan because three generations ago, my Mexican and Italian great-grandparents immigrated to America. Two generations ago, my grandparents raised their families on the west side of San Antonio and in South Waco. And my parents, small business owners, Chicano activists, and lifelong community advocates raised me and my siblings in Waco, Texas. I went to college in Austin, taught middle school in Rio Grande Valley, and now own a home with my husband and three kids in south-central Austin and current Congressional District 37. I know Texas values. And as a former social studies teacher, I know that the Texas Constitution states all political power is inherent in the people, and all free governments are founded on their authority and instituted for their benefit. This outrageous mid-decade redistricting move by the governor and the current DOJ enforced by the unpopular authoritarian in the White House to increase Republican representation in the US House by taking existing districts away from communities of color, including my friends and neighbors in the current District 35 in East Austin, just a few miles away from where I live, is shameful. Sin vergüenza, as my abuelita used to say. This process has laid bare the pitiful reality that today's statewide electeds, politicians, part of a Republican Party that has held power in this state for most of my life, are behaving as if our communities' voices and votes are for sale to out-of-state donors and corrupt interests. That my family's tax dollars are being wastefully mismanaged by incompetent state leadership that has chosen to kneel to a wannabe king. It's not a game, is it? I urge you to stop this undemocratic, ridiculous political maneuver. Do not pass SB4.
And thank you for your testimony. Pull the microphone close. Welcome. Introduce yourself and go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Carrie King, and I am testifying on behalf of myself and against this proposed redistricting. Fair and equal representation, the crown jewel of our democracy, that is what we are here to protect. However, as long as the ability to get away with racial gerrymandering remains, we will stay stuck in a loop, repeating a sad and shameful cycle of domination and oppression. Our country's racist legacy started with the colonization and near-obliteration of native peoples. Then came the saga of slavery, answered by the Civil War and Jim Crow. The civil rights movement exposed the pervasive racism that continues to plague our society to this day, but people of color finally secured the Voting Rights Act. Unfortunately, over the past 60 years to the day yesterday, the Voting Rights Act has been whittled down slowly but surely. And now today, we see how brazen and out-in-the-open white supremacy has become with this "Let's Go Brandon" stickers on trucks and neo-Nazis marching in New Hampshire, not to mention ICE out there racially profiling and spreading doom and fear across our nation. We have to show up with the moral fiber it takes to meet this moment. We have to choose love and kindness. Members, it's up to you to steer our great experiment in representative democracy back towards equity and justice. Reject this DC-ordered redistricting plan and right our sinking ship. Turn away from fear of losing personal power. Look deeply into and open your hearts to the space where courage defeats intimidation. Our democracy is counting on all of you to choose integrity over corruption. Texas House Democrat representatives who've broken quorum, thank you so much from the bottom of our hearts. Thank you for honoring the nonviolent legacy of civil rights warriors who've come before you, the likes of Jordan King and Louis, who are smiling down upon you. Thank you for the good trouble. I'm here to add my voice to the powerful message we heard from Senator Miles here today and to demonstrate to my two sons who are present in this room that when we see injustice, we must stand up and fight back. When we do, love wins. Thank you.
And thank you for your testimony. Welcome. Pull that microphone over, if you will, and introduce yourself and give us your testimony.
Thank you. My name is David Wheeler. I'm representing myself. I am speaking today in opposition of SB4. This is a bill that only serves to undercut our democracy and ratchet up the tensions between parties. It is a power grab, as has been acknowledged. Last week, more than ninety-three percent of the more than five-hundred people who testified or dropped cards concerning HB4 stated that they oppose this action. From Senator Miles's note today, the percentage is ninety-eight percent against today in testimony. This is a call to try to manipulate the congressional map for party gain, not for the good of the people or for the state. The brave House members who broke quorum have offered you an opportunity to take a step back and reconsider this rash action. Have the courage, integrity, and will to vote no and keep this awful bill, with respect, from leaving your committee. Voting yes will only serve to undermine faith in our government and faith in you. If you will not hear my words, I can only ask that you heed this warning from George Washington in his farewell address. However political parties may now and then answer popular ends, they are likely in the course of time and things to become potent engines by which cunning, ambitious, and unprincipled men will be enabled to subvert the power of the people and to usurp for themselves the reins of the government, destroying afterwards the very engines which have lifted them to unjust dominion. The time that Washington warned us against is now. You have the power to step back from this precipice. Senators, please heed this warning from our first president. Serve democracy over party. Serve state over party. Argue state. This bill undercuts our great experiment. Vote against SB4. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr., for your testimony. Dr. Karanza, welcome. You know how to do this. Get that microphone close, introduce yourself, and go ahead.
I am Dr. Susana Karanza, representing myself, and I oppose this horrible bill and this entire rush process. The Chair, Mr. King, has claimed this was a wonderful process, citing the early Matlas hearings. Well, being forced to mark neutral when so many of us said hell no does not sound like a fair process to me. Texas do not want this rush process or this map. Yet, you filed the same exact map that will illegally break communities of color, of interest, and gerrymander cities and receive overwhelming rejection last Friday at the House hearings. The Chair also mentioned the horrors of the previous administration as a motivation for the new districts. You mean like ICE pulling people out of cars because they look brown? Well, that was not the previous administration. This is happening right now. I'm a naturalized citizen who has called the U.S. home for more than half my life. I was born in Brazil during peak dictatorship, when people were being disappeared. Kinda sounds similar. There's a movie I'm still here, and you might learn something from it. As a little kid, I went to pro-democracy rallies with my older siblings. I was lucky to see the transition out of dictatorship. Right now, you all with this map are handing down on a silver platter our democracy to Trump. It's not too late. I support House members who are breaking quorum to defend Texans, and if you really want to learn from history, you're going to withdraw this map right now and switch the focus to flood, because if you say, well, maybe if they come back, we'll work on things, well, work on floods, all right? Do the right thing. You'll have time.
Thanks, Dr. Karanza, for your testimony. Senator King, Chairman King, you're recognized. Oh, thank you, Doctor, and thanks for being here today. Just wanted to make sure of something. You said you were required to vote or to mark neutral when you registered?
On the Matlas hearings, like last week.
But today, you were able to register in opposition.
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure the registration process was working right.
Yes, it is. Can I continue? I'm, I'm saying that you're using the previous hearings to say this was open and fair, but people could not officially say they opposed before while they clearly opposed during the Senate hearings, where their words clearly oppose. So, and today, I understand, I marked against. I have been here a time or many, as some of you have known, but having to mark neutral last week felt really, really horrible, because I was not neutral at all.
Just so everybody understands how that works, anytime there's not, someone mentioned the flood hearings. In the flood hearings, if you registered to testify, you had to test, you had to register neutral, because there's no bill before the committee under consideration, so that's why you would mark neutral. The same thing was true in the redistricting hearings before there was a map. That's exactly why we're having a public testimony today, is because we have a map, and we wanted people to be able to register that they're for it, neutral on it, or, or against it. So, that's, that's why that, that occurred earlier. But now that there is a map, a bill, that anyone who registers to testify can register their opposition to it. So, just, that's kind of how that works for the general public's knowledge. Now, I know you know that, Doctor.
I understand the process, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, Senators, are there any other questions for our witnesses on this panel? Thank you for being here. Your excuse. And for the benefit of those listening, who may not be familiar with the process, anyone who's watched knows that every witness was allowed and encouraged to fully express their opinion for or against anything, and no one, not even, no one has even suggested that a registration of neutral on the topic was a support or anything like that for the redistricting process. And again, folks familiar with the process, no, but we would, we sure wouldn't want someone listening in who doesn't know how that system works to be misled.